Aaron and George, can you guys come up and help me?
This is exciting.
Come on.
Big moment. Nice. Well done. All right. Well done.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the public hearing of the Board of Education for Homewood School District 153. Roll call, please.
Mr. Booth. Ms. Marks.
Here.
Ms. Bethay. Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Zinnerman.
Here.
Ms. Scully.
Here.
Mr. Bosch. Present.
Yeah, she's officially voted in. Okay, five present. Ashanti and Broderick are both running late tonight, but they will be here. So, we have the pleasure of seating our newly appointed board member. Before we officially do that, I just want to mention how grateful I am to the sixteen people who applied for this open position. I don't think we've ever had this many people apply for a position, and we really appreciate that everyone was willing to step up and serve their community. So, with that being said, I would like to introduce you to someone who needs no introduction, Christine Scully, who's our new board member. We're all very excited. And I'm going to have you do the oath of office, and this is how we do it. You are going to read until it says, "I further swear or affirm that." And then, we'll start down at Jim's end of the table, and we'll come down this way, and everybody will read a paragraph, because it's all a good reminder to all of us of what we're doing up here.
Okay.
And we don't want you to feel singled out or off.
Sounds good. It's like in school, right?
Exactly, exactly. It's a group project. Okay, go ahead.
I, Christine Scully, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of the Board of Education or Board of Directors of Homewood School District 153 in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois, to the best of my ability.
I further swear that...
I shall respect taxpayer interest by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board, while respecting the privacy of students and employees.
I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual, and the decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting.
I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to speak, changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
As part of the Board of Education or Board of School Directors, as the case may be, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the district, in the school district.
I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for Homewood School District 153.
I shall assist in establishing a structure and in an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework.
I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law.
I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community's school or schools to advance the vision for School District 153 and...
I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision of the board the board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. Period.
Welcome to the board.
Thank you.
And I hope that you find your service here as fulfilling as all of us have, and that you hang around for a long, long time, as all of us have. So, we have more business to accomplish, but we're going to just take a short pause so your friends and family can congratulate you. And then, you guys are all welcome to stay for our budget hearing. It's fascinating, trust me. But if you decide that you don't want to stay, we won't be hurt if you have more important things to do tonight. So, we're just going to take a quick pause in the action so people can congratulate you.
Yeah, and we'll get some pictures in front of the backdrop here.
Let's do that first. Come on up.
You mean the one at 6:00 AM was not good enough?
It wasn't for me.
Oh, okay, I wasn't sure what. You want to get a board first?
Yeah, let's get a board picture first, and then we'll get a family picture.
I'm gonna stand in her hand. Yeah. I'm gonna change first.
If you could take... Yeah, well, they've got people. We're good. They've got pictures. Take your shit. Christine, do you want more of the friends?
Yeah. And if Christine's friends could come up for a photo op?
You guys want to slide down this way? A little further.
Balance.
Keep going, keep going.
Keep going, keep going.
Keep going. So everyone's in front of the backdrop.
All right.
I have all the friends, but also like all the friends that I know because of school stuff. So, between school for PTA, board, um, not board, um, foundation, former teacher, yeah, that's kind of who I know.
Nice. Great that, great that everyone came. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. All right, we are going to move on. We need to... Yeah, if you guys want to leave, honestly, like you can stay, but, I mean, I'm not pushing you out, but we aren't offended. Do what you want.
Guys can leave with the kids.
We need to seat a new board secretary. Is there a motion?
I'd like to nominate Ron Zinnerman as the new board secretary.
I would second that.
Are there any... Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ron.
Motion carries. Congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. And we have an overview of the 2024-2025 budget.
Dr. Trinberger.
Come on up.
Now's your moment to shine. He was so excited to get up here earlier. He wanted to...
I know.
Get going right off the bat.
I saw that. You had a share tonight.
So, when we talked about the tentative budget last month, we said one of the big things we were waiting on was corporate personal credit replacement taxes from the Illinois Department of Revenue. We had estimated a 15% reduction, and unfortunately, they came up with a 33% reduction. So, we had to reduce revenue by about $110,000. And we did add in $17,000 for E-rate. After made adjustments for staffing and finding software changing it by 26, we increased expenses by just over $65,000. So, on the operating side, we're showing a deficit of $157,401. Our witnesses offset by a surplus of $515,310 in our Illinois municipal retirement fund, as well as social security and Medicare. So, just some important things to keep in mind, even though we are running a deficit. The deficit is due to increases in purchase services for completion of the Rook and Churchill this summer, as well as the start of the Rook and Willow next year. And we have money planned for a new flooring and sports capital, which will be shared by the park district. So, our expenditures are around by now $3.4 billion as a result of this construction. In our regular reserve, we're at $1.9 billion. So, we have a slight decrease in our operating costs at the end of the year.
Any questions for Eric from the board? From the audience? Mr. Scott.
The operating expenditures are $31,247,038. Thirty, uh, last year, $33,329,662.
And just to remind everybody, what percent of that is for staff salary and benefits?
About 75% is to go for salary benefits. We're people business, obviously, education, so we're possibly tentative.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
It's moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, I'm going to give everybody a second to find the agenda for tonight's meeting, the regular meeting. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of Homewood School District 153 for September 16th, 2024. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bosch. Present. Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Ms. Bethay.
Here.
Mr. Zinnerman.
Here.
Ms. Scully.
Here.
Mr. Booth.
Here.
Ms. Marks.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. We have approval of minutes from the Committee of the Whole Meeting of August 12th, 2024, the regular board meeting of August 12th, 2024, and the special board meeting of August 26th, 2024. Are there any additions or corrections to either set of minutes? Is there a motion to approve?
It's moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have future dates.
Yes, just a reminder, this Wednesday is an early release day, so students will be going home halfway, and we have some of our professional development planned for that afternoon. Friday, October 11th is an all-date institute day. And one of the things that is really unique, a director of curriculum, Kathy Shafeline, seated in the back, has been working closely with South Cook Intermediate Service Center. And one of the things we are doing this year, which is unique, is all South Cook districts, and there are sixty-six school districts in South Cook, are participating in a collective institute day. So, we will have about 120 staff members here continuing with deep equity work, but all staff members who are not part of that are going to be part of the South Cook Professional Development Day. And Kathy, where are the two locations for that again?
They're, they're splitting up the staff from the different grade levels and job categories, so teachers can get together. I'm not sure where our staff is going to be and where the split is going to be. Some of our junior high, junior high and above, maybe at Florida Community High School, with high school teachers, depending on the amount of teachers. And then the other group, pre-K and up to wherever the cut is, is going to be at Hoover's Drawn Middle School in San Francisco.
Very good, so...
There will be two keynote speakers, a keynote speaker at each location. And then teachers, staff members will be able to choose sessions. So, there will be a keynote speaker and have three great sessions with participants from all over the faculty area.
Yeah. A lot of planning has gone into this, and Kathy, again, was part of the organizing committee for that. So, thank you for your work, and it's an exciting venture for us. So, that's on Friday, the 11th, and then that leads into Monday, the 14th, and Tuesday, the 15th of October. Monday is Recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day, so there's no attendance for students or staff. And then we have one extra day off, Tuesday, the 15th. So, for students and families, that is five consecutive days off for a fall break.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
All righty, we have a presentation tonight?
We do. I'm going to go up to the laptop here. Mr. Slifka, could you come forward, please?
So... I'm going to turn this over to our teacher at Willow School, Andy Slifka. Andy has been outstanding teacher of Willow for many, many years. And during COVID, I don't want to steal your thunder. I want you to kind of explain the genesis of this whole thing, and then we're going to unveil the dramatic picture for all of you to see. If you haven't had an opportunity to see the project that Andy created, it's really something. And I wanted to have it in person, but we were afraid that it might be a little fragile, so we kept it at a tone with Willow. But we'll show you some pictures. So, Andy, you want to talk a little bit about what you've created for our district?
Absolutely. Hi, everyone. Like Dr. McAllister said, I'm Andy Slifka, the Willow art teacher. This is my seventeenth year in the district, so I've been around a while. Most of the people here are friendly faces because I taught your kids, several board members. I've taught your kids as well over the years, so I've been around here a while. And my formal background in art education was also with painting, so that's kind of what I always did. And then, you know, once I got a house in Enrage, I started building things and would make things out of wood and make some furniture, and things kind of just like grew from there. And when the COVID lockdowns happened, you know, basically, I started saving these marker caps just as extra spares. Being in the elementary art room, you go through a pot of markers in school year, and saving the caps are huge, because every single day I would have to snap, re-snap caps. The markers wouldn't dry out. So, probably five, six years into teaching, I started saving caps. And then it ballooned into, well, I have all these caps, and what am I going to do with them? And so, I found this program from Crayola, pre-COVID, where the school district in California, they consulted with Crayola. They figured out, hey, we can turn in old markers and pens into biofuel, which is pretty cool. And so, I was collecting markers through that. I got the school to help out. It was a great thing for teachers and students to do. That's why I got involved with the marker caps. Well, years of saving led to perfect timing with the COVID lockdowns. As unfortunate as it was, we locked down on March 13th of that year, and I was like, I need a project to do. So, I had built a smaller marker cap displayed for my classroom, just simply said art, about 300 caps. And through all the caps that I'd saved, I realized, oh, I've probably got a few thousand. Maybe I'll make the Wildcat that I designed years prior for the school district, for my school. I was like, I'll just do the Wildcat face with like rainbow stripes in the background. Keep it simple. And it became probably the hardest artwork that I've ever created. Just, there was engineering involved. There was trial and error. I wanted to throw away. My wife and I were crazy. What are you doing in the basement? And I'm glad I didn't give up, because it turned out really, really special. And I'm overwhelmed by the response that the school and the administrators and Dr. McAllister, the board, everybody is just, it's been wonderful. So, I'm excited to show some pictures of it.
Thank you, Andy. And again, seeing pictures doesn't quite do it justice, but you'll get a great appreciation of the work that he even put in. And I'm glad you mentioned also these logos. So, all the, all the school messaging that you see are three school logos, as well as the 153 logo was designed by Andy probably, what, five or six years ago? You did that? Okay, so let's give this... Very dramatic.
Do you want the lights out? Or do you think it'll show? Yeah, okay.
Wait in anticipation. I'm sure it's going to happen. There we go. Okay, so let me minimize this little... All right, so Andy, if you want to, if you could scroll over there.
Absolutely. So, this is the photo that Marilyn from HF Chronicles, she did a wonderful article about it. So, if you want to read more in depth about the process and what I went through, I kind of, I would talk to Europe about it. But basically, there's myself next to the final piece for scale, really. So, it's roughly four feet square in size. I did the math, and there is roughly 7,700 marker caps in there, held together by a basic wooden, like wood trim and plywood frame with plexiglass over the top and a little bit of trim molding as well. The interesting thing was I built it flat with the hope of that I could leave the caps on in a honeycomb cutter. And the caps are not all uniform, so when I got about thirty rows up, they were starting to tilt and slip, and I realized I had to make it flat. So, in my basement, I basically set it up flat. So, this is kind of what it looks like flat. The nice thing about working flat is gravity is in your favor. So, all the caps were pristine and laid out perfectly. And then ultimately, when I, the first time I attached the wood top, and I had screwed it and glued it with construction adhesive, now a smart move. So, I turned it up and was like, oh, it'll be fine. No, the plexiglass started to pull out in the middle. I almost broke down in tears, because I had just given my over a year of work to this thing in COVID lockdown, nonetheless, so motions are running high. And I really wanted to throw it away. So, I have some various pictures here up close of just kind of cool up close shots. The background stripes have different colors sprinkled through, and as well as the, when you see the marker Wildcat up close, so the Wildcat face has the markers from the front, and then the background has it reversed, because there's actually a little dotted side ring when you look at them from the front. When you look at it from the back, it's just like a ring with a darker color. So, I kind of reversed them. The colors are kind of sprinkled throughout, because I didn't have enough orange to do the Wildcat first, so there's red and yellow over there as well. This is my digital design that I came up with in Adobe Illustrator. So, I was able to get an exact marker cap count for dot count, and this is what I based it off of. And that's the final result. There are roughly sixteen to twenty that are filled with hot glue and mounted in there just to give it some structure. And then there are about eight, I kind of hid the construction screws. I ultimately just kind of had a safe space, and I couldn't do resin. It would be too hard. I couldn't do poor glue in there. It'd be insanely heavy. So, I just was like, okay, I guess I have to drill holes in it and put some screws through it. And so, there are some very well-heated black caps that are the same size as the marker cap, so it can seal it pretty well. And this is in my basement. You can see the printout of the line followed, and I just went row by row with the model marker. There's none up close, but you can see the corner of the Wildcat face along with the background and how different they look. And there is one vertical. You can see that kind of lining up. So, that's it.
That is, that is an amazing piece of work. I, I mean, when Andy showed that picture to me for the first time, I was, I was literally speechless. And then I saw it in person. And again, we really wanted to have it here, but you can, I think, appreciate at this point moving something that's four square feet. And as fragile as this is, we just didn't want to risk that. So, we encourage you at some point when you're over at Willow to see it in person.
Actually, only about fifty hours. It's just so large. I did actually dolly with pastors plus my group, so... I went a little while all the way around school, see my colleagues, and was like, this is tiny.
Andy, this was on the floor when you were working on it?
And so, I ended up having to, my wife helping me tilt it and put it on kind of a rolling cart.
Okay, so it looks like backbreaking work.
Uh, it was, it just was frustrating to figure everything out and switching colors around was tricky, so...
Thank you.
Also, that was...
Thank you. It's beautiful and fabulous. Thanks.
So, it's in the garden hallway, it's a great, fantastic, temporary. My hope is to kind of have the rolling ground through the wood, kind of the opening boards, and kind of manage to make the garden hallway, and we can get the floor back to be a bar and a...
Thank you.
Yeah, one thing I'll add is, our district had always talked about the importance of not only, you know, math and reading, but also arts, you know, whether it's visual or performing. And, and this is a great example. I met Willow frequently, and I'm able to walk by Andy's room, and the kids just love the class, and they love him personally, and you can kind of see why. I mean, his personality, but also your passion for teaching others. So, Andy, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to audience participation. Is there anyone in the audience who has come to address the board on any items that are not on tonight's agenda? Come on up. Kelly, can you please speak into the microphone? Sorry, but you can, you can tilt it down if you don't want to hold. Okay, and tell us your name.
My name is Kelly Rodriguez-More, and I am a parent of a special child in a B.C. program level. So, I just wanted to address the board due to some concerns in an early childhood classroom. It was very, very clear from the beginning of the school year that there was a little, missed, some stacking issues. And as of last week, none of those issues were being communicated or addressed. So, I had sent several emails, not only to the coordinator, but I addressed them with the teachers. There was a permanent substitute teacher at that point, and I wasn't getting any responses. So, I sent it to me to say that I had to, you know, then say, okay, well, I guess I would address the board of these concerns. In the meantime, I have spoken to now the principal of Willow, the assistant principal of the social worker, the speech pathologist, and the educational therapist. So, my concern was one that there wasn't a special education early childhood teacher now. Being a professional myself and knowing that, you know, special ed in general is new to me. I've been in the district for years, with my older two, but knowing that you needed a little more structure and consistency, and I was really, really, really excited for him to be placed in the daily living classroom. So, I, I did the observation. I did his IP. We were set, ready to go. I was so excited. I sent him. And then I received a letter saying that Kristen was not going to be in that classroom. So, my question was, why? My gosh, where did she go? No, we can't leave. So, the, you know, heartbreak of... Um, so the, you know, heartbreak of something that I was anticipating then was not there. I said, okay, well, we're continuing to try. Right? So we're really open to, um, adjustment and change. Um, he had a really hard time and he's continuing to have a really hard time. I think there was seven different teachers so far in it. And it's not acceptable. It really isn't. Um, I wish that there was a option for Kristen to have stayed in her position until there were an appropriate teacher to take her place. So, and I'm really, really excited that she is in the district with us and she's wonderful and great. And I, you know, like, I, you guys have to know how excited it was for her to be no one's teacher. Um, and the substitute teachers have, my older children have had them in the past too, but they're not special education and they're not early childhood teachers. So, um, and as of Friday, I did receive a email back. Um, I think it was a general email to all the E C family with a plan that there was going to be another, um, teacher, substitute teacher that has been in the district to cover five days and then perhaps a new employer, um, you know, somebody coming in new to the district, um, three days a week. So one, I want to make sure that their credentials are appropriate for the classroom. And two, um, I don't want no one to, I don't want to go back until that's in place because I don't feel like having multiple teachers in and out of the room. He doesn't have that person to go in and get excited. He's telling me, you know, no way you go to school in the opposite way. He doesn't communicate, um, at age, you know, at age level. But he's very communicative that he does not want to go into this building. He doesn't want, he doesn't have anybody that he's connected to. Um, and the emails that I was sending, I wasn't getting a response. So that was disappointing. Um, so I don't know, you know, standing issues. I know people only have the shortage of special education teachers, let alone the E C, um, early childhood. But, um, this room really, really needs a little extra TLC and I don't, I think it wasn't a nurturing environment for him to start. So it really, um, has been hard trying to stay positive and, um, like what to look forward, ask what are the next steps? So, um, principal board, she did call and say that, you know, there is a plan. Um, I want to know, one, is the position going to stay open for a permanent full-time special education teacher? And then, um, I want no one to be able to continue services. I want to be able to bring him to school, have him receive a speech OT, um, social work and, um, PT if needed. So I did ask for a IEP, um, meeting that's now set, it's set up today. Um, they emailed me and let me know that it was going to be in place on Wednesday. Um, but I feel that for the other kids too, because I'm a speech pathologist, I, I, I know the laws and education, so I, I know personally and plus I've been in the district for a long time, but that doesn't help the other twenty kids in this program, um, whether or not, you know, they're aware of the situation or not. So I just want to make sure that it's being addressed and that, um, that we work as a team to try to find a solution and fix it.
Thank you.
Yeah. No, I will. First of all, let me apologize personally. Right? So you, you said, um, you talked about the teacher that was in the program and then, and then was moved into a different position. And I'll just be very honest, if I had to do this all over again, I would have done it differently. Right? Yeah. Hindsight being, being twenty twenty, of course. So my apologies. The last thing I want is for any family, yourself or anybody else, to feel the way you feel. Right? And that, that, that upsets me because it upsets you. So, um, we have, we have had extended conversations about how to approach this. You, you asked a specific question about is the position going to remain posted, for lack of a better term? And yes, we, we continue to search for people. The reality is we don't expect to find an applicant in October, let's say. Our best hope is to continue to look, but look for December graduates so that we can get somebody who has proper certification. The individual that we do have, you mentioned three days a week, that person is, that is their background. They, they're a retired teacher and that is their area credentials. So we're excited about that. We really, really tried to get them to be here five days a week, but not surprisingly, they retired for a reason and they don't want to work five days a week. So all that said, we, we have what we feel is a very qualified person at this point, albeit on a three day basis. And then we do have somebody in there full time outside of that. For consistency. Yeah. So that, so that person is there and sees this, this certified teacher who, this is her background, so she can work closely with her. Well, there's a, there's assistants. Yeah, there's, there's the two that we just referenced and then the three assistants. So, yeah. Yeah. So just trying to provide stability. I mean, I, I, you referenced multiple bodies have been in there, right? And so, um, we're trying to provide a stable, a stable set of faces, if you will. And the three assistants, they are, they are stable. They've been in that program for years, but, but, you know, they're not, they're not credentialed in that area. So, um, so just, just know that we, we have had those conversations. As far as the communication, I'm sorry, it didn't happen sooner or better. All we can do is do better in the future. So if. Well, um, as soon as possible. It's just a matter of getting them, making sure that they have all the licensing that they need, sub license, right? It's a retired teacher, but they still have to have a credential to be a sub in the program. So as soon as we can get that and that, we're going to expedite that as quickly as possible. Ultimately, not our decision, it's through the regional office, but ASAP.
And so that's in place, we're gonna keep him home.
Understand that.
The second thing was, you know, through the various teachers, um, one day we would communicate, okay, it's time of schedule. So I scheduled his work if he, you know, was not allowed any of the two and a half hours that he could have worked. Well, then the next day, somebody else would be there. And I was like, oh, well, we didn't know that. So then three days along, you know, he comes up just full red, big crying and one of the aides, there you go. And I said, what? He's not able to communicate to me, you know, why are you crying? What's wrong? How was your day? Um, so two of the things that I wanted to address was one, we need a, um, evaluation for communication system needs to be in place because obviously with the different staff, they, they weren't, um, what understanding that and you, um, there was, you know, this personal thing that what they were happening and, um, they were just kind of getting push off. So, and so that happened, he was called, he's at home, but, um, like I said, I want to make sure the services are being provided.
I think in your IEP meeting on Wednesday, you'll be able to address all of these things and work through a plan that's best for him. Um, and I also want to tell you the most important job you have as a parent is advocating for your child. And that's what a good parent does. And you're doing it and, and good for, it's so hard.
I feel like a bad guy, you know, so you have more problems than, but, um, you know, when he's trying to, hey, there's no way to go in there. It's not.
We're gonna find a way that he wants to go in. Okay? Thanks, Kelly.
Yeah. Thank you for coming.
You did do good. Anybody else in the audience come to address the board on, come on up? And if you could, please also tell us your name.
My name is Catherine Verge and.
Could you speak into the mic? Thanks. Thanks.
My name is Catherine Verge and I'm speaking on behalf of my sister-in-law and on behalf of my brother. Unfortunately, we had a situation that happened at Willow School four days into the school year. An incident in which my five-year-old niece was released from school without one of us being present. How do I know that nobody was present? Because I was at the incorrect door. I was at door B. She was at door C. By the time I made it to door C, she was gone. She was gone not for two minutes, not for five minutes, but for twenty minutes. My niece was later found wandering the streets. We are actually unsupervised, brought back to the school by a teacher by the name of Miss Woods, who I appreciate for bringing her back. However, we should have never gotten there. Per your school policy, it states that, um, walkers need at designated doors where staff members release them once their pickup person is in sight. If students are still waiting for arrival at the end of dismissal time, they are brought back to the office. If your child is not at their usual spot for pickup, you have to check into the office. I had my son attend from Willow from kindergarten, you know, now. Their other son has attended Willow from kindergarten. They're now in Churchill in third and fourth grade. We also have another, um, her other son has graduated from James Hart about two years ago. So we're familiar with the policies that you all have. However, there is concern where it comes to these children, especially a five-year-old who was excited to go to school and yet does not want to step foot on after school. We try every day and still she's crying because she has a situation in which she is concerned about someone taking her or being lost. She's having anxiety, anxiety to the point that if you don't tell her where you're going, she breaks down and cries. So as a, as a parent, as an aunt, as the grandmother who's over there, we want to know what is the policy that's going to be implemented for situations such as this because no student should ever have to go through this. No parent should ever have to go through this. And the fact that I continuously asked for someone, number one, to call the police. Nobody from the district called the police. The police were called because I phoned my father asking him if he had somehow picked her up and then let me know. My father downtown called the police to have them to come to the school. That's unacceptable. Whereas you may have things that are handled in-house, that right there, there has to be a better way. Now, I do thank you, Dr. McAllister, for coming up to the school. However, instead of them phoning you first, they should have phoned Tollwood so we could have found my niece, especially if the police are in the area suddenly. She could have easily been found. But the question still remains, who did they release her to? Because my brother literally has to go to the door and, and say, I'm here for her. And he picks her up and he takes her. So who was she released to? We still don't have those answers yet. We're getting text messages asking to bring her back to school to try to do a half a day. But nobody's told us about something that's being implemented. So can you all let me know what's going to be done?
Dr. McAllister, do you want to?
Yeah. I mean, I can certainly, and we spoke that day. I, I can certainly tell you in terms of the process that's been in place at Willow for years, um, is that chi, children line up at the door and then they are, you know, literally, where's your parent? Where's your adult? And the child says, there's my adult. And the child's released to the adult. In this case, well, we, we've had the conversation. I don't want to get into specifics. What has changed and, you know, Ms. Gordon is in the back, the principal, um, we are now walking kids specifically out and a parent is walking up in like a hand-to-hand transfer. Is that a, an accurate description, Ms. Gordon?
Yeah.
So rather than, rather, excuse me, rather than saying, you know, there's, there's your adult and them walking the fifteen to twenty feet to where they're standing, now they are being transferred like past hand-to-hand. So that's the change that, that has taken place as a result of this. So that, that's, that's the answer to, to your specific question. And I, and I'd be happy, without going into details about this specific situation, that's generally how the policies change for all kids, but certainly happy to sit down with you and the family and, and talk specifically about, you know, this situation.
We've had it with my dad before when he, that period is picking up sort of, um, Willow, we never experienced it. We always had to go through the door. So I, we still need answers.
I, can I think?
Unfortunately, kind of got me. We were told multiple things. They called Sharina and they told Sharina that Dad had her up at my school because he was across town. We were told multiple things in that kind of situation, which is, is correct.
Can I suggest that you sit down with Dr. McAllister and kind of go through what changes have been made and how we can help your niece get back to school?
Yeah.
Yeah. I understand.
And I feel so, this situation has created a negative impact.
And we want to.
And I told Dr. McAllister and I told multiple people, you won't have one time to raise your child.
Mm-hmm.
And I refuse to allow anybody to be out of school to destroy our children.
And.
And I'm that advocate of this.
And we want to make sure that we can get, that she can be successful in school and grow a love of school. So let's sit down with Dr. McAllister and let's figure out where we can go from here to have a outcome. We can't change what happened. We can change going forward how we handle it. But I think the time is to look at this specific situation one-on-one and figure out how we can get to where we need to be. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Anybody else in the audience come to address the board on any items that are not on tonight's agenda? Come on up.
I finally, my one, like, I don't know about Kristen. Um, I wanted to follow up with a positive story about Willow. I feel important, both their stories are completely empathized. I just want to say that we've been through, uh, the rooms, IEPs, and we have finally come up with communication school. And it's really worked well for our family. And I just wanted to say thank you to my family and to the whole team that has helped for this Google app that I can get all of my therapists to tell me what's going on every day. It's been instrumental and I hope that this can be used throughout the whole school. All the school districts should be able to use a tool like this and parents shouldn't have to fight, fight, fight for it. That's it.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience come to address the board on any item that is not on tonight's agenda? Okay. We will move on then. Thank you all. Are there any responses to questions or concerns raised by the audience at previous meetings?
No.
All right. And do any board members have any, uh, reports of any committee meetings?
Yes. Um, we had a, excuse me, we had a finance and property committee meeting on September fourth. Um, and during the meeting, um, we discussed several items that are on the, um, agenda for this evening. One of the items that we discussed, which Dr. Trinberger talked about earlier, is the FY25 budget. It's on the, um, the agenda this evening for board approval. Uh, we talked about trustee appointment to the Bloom Township, trustees of schools. That's also on the agenda this evening. Um, and then we also discussed some, um, property, um, potential property projects going forward. And we kind of had, we did a summary to some degree about the, um, the roof projects at both Willow and Churchill. And that's kind of it for finance and property. Has anyone else had any other comments?
Very good. Any other board members? All right. We have several consent agenda items tonight. The first is. Oh, yeah. Superintendence report. Sorry.
No, that's fine.
I scrolled down too fast.
That's fine. I really don't have a report. But I do want to hear from, uh, from our building principals. We're three weeks into the school year and, uh, I think it's, it's always a really exciting time in schools to, to have our kids back and our staff back. And I wanted to ask each of them if they could come up and, uh, in a minute or two, just share what's been going on at the buildings. I know we've had two of our three open houses and then also possibly any upcoming events. So if the three of you would like to come forward and, uh, Ms. Johnson, uh, we'll start with James Hart, uh, if you would like to take the lead. You just got to talk into the microphone though, so all the good people at home can hear you. so all the good people at home can hear you.
Um, good evening, all, good evening, audience. Hello, everyone. Um, we are off to a magnificent start at James Hart. We have so much going on, uh, for the school year. Uh, clubs and activities have started. We've got sports going on. Actually, right before this, our, um, seventh and eighth grade girls got their basketball, had their first win, first game, first win today. So a couple of things going on. So softball season ended on Saturday. Lost in regionals, but we're very proud of them, and, um, and most of the team are moving on to the next sport, the next thing that they're involved in. Baseball regionals are coming up, um, next Monday. Uh, that's going to be a home game. Girls' basketball, like I said, had those first wins today against Brookwood, so that season is off to a great start. And they got some new uniforms. We have now had a new uniform. So basketball team, very long time. So I'm very excited about the new uniforms. The team is so great. Um, cheer, palms, clubs. I encourage our parents, um, to, one thing we've been asking, you know, telling parents about is like looking at, just looking online with our Panther TV announcements, because in addition to the videos, it's actually a script. You know, so you can see all the stuff that's going on and even the clubs and activities that are coming up. But it's a, it's something for everybody. Lego and Pokemon in addition to, you know, our sports. So it's a lot going on. Um, PBIS program's about to kick off. My famous snack card is coming up, so the students have been asking me about that, um, every day. So we are off to a wonderful start, and, you know, things are going to continue to be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Peacock? We're excited, uh, we, we have two new principals this year in the district. I know you're all familiar and, uh, really excited to welcome the first of our two new principals, Tara Peacock, who's principal at Churchill.
Yes, and I'm elated, so I'm going to try to contain myself. I'm always elated, and Churchill's staff is finally getting used to it, and so are the students. All right, so some positive things we've got going on. First of all, we've got thirty-two Bulldog Dads. I see a couple out here, um, that have signed up. We've already ordered our shirts. As soon as they come in Friday, we will kick off that schedule. Um, our Bulldog Dads, for those that may not get our lovely Bulldog Bulletin weekly, uh, they will give some positive encouragement during recess. At lunch, you could never have extra eyes and hands to high-five students for an extra dose of positivity. Also, we began our weekly Bulldog Bulletin, so our parents will get communication early and often, so that is every week. If somehow they miss in their email, you can always go to our website. It's there, right up under Parents. Um, number three, we have started our weekly Friday Focus, so that way the staff will know exactly what's coming up for the next week. They get that every Friday. Um, we had over four hundred people come out for our supply drop-off, and Pam Sicles with the principal, so we had a great time there. Uh, last Thursday, we had over four hundred and fifty people come out for our open house and curriculum night. Um, we have finished our STAR testing. We are kicking off our PBIS rewards. So on Wednesday, students get their prizes. They're so excited. Um, and then last but not least, we reinstated morning announcements at Churchill in the morning. And so we kicked off Hispanic Heritage Month, and the kids are all already asking, "When can I do the next announcement? When can I say the pledge?" So there's lots of good things happening at Churchill School. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peacock. And then, uh, new principal at Willow School, Ryan Gordon. Ryan, welcome.
Hi, everybody. Uh, I always hate to follow Ms. Peacock because if you know anything about her, she is full of excitement all the time, wherever she lands. But, um, as you know, we have some of our youngest learners, uh, in the district, and so our focus to start has been a lot on procedures and routines and just kind of getting them in the know at Willow School. Uh, if you hear crying, just keep going. That just means that they're getting transitioned in. Uh, and that only happens for a, a quick snapshot of the day. Um, but other than that, we had a great turnout for our supply drop-off, uh, the vassalery of our parents attended. Um, it really had great feedback there. We have open house coming up and are looking forward to that. Uh, I'm kind of piggyback off of Tara's Bulldog Dad. I had a dad to come to me and say, "We'd like to bring that to Willow." So we'll have a table and open house for the Dad Squad. Um, and we're really excited about that. Um, lots of things kind of happening. Uh, pay attention to our bulletins as well because it has a lot of information. I try to kind of put everything in there all at once. Uh, the other thing is a special, uh, shout-out to Marilyn. Um, she walked into Willow and we had some, um, pretty, uh, dead flowers in one of our pots. Um, and she just came, and I said, "Oh, Marilyn, hey, come on back." She says, "No, I, you know, I want you to walk outside with me." And I thought, "Oh, my gosh, what am I about to see?" Um, and she said, "I, you know, I walked in to deliver the newspapers and saw these. Uh, can I plant some herbs?" Um, and the next, very next day, we came back and we had brand-new flowers, uh, in front of Willow, so thanks, Marilyn. Uh, other than that, I'm always around, and, uh, feel free to contact me.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon.
And thank you, Marilyn.
And thank you, Marilyn. That's it.
Okay, great. Now we have consent agenda items. The first is to authorize the chief school business official to pay the usual and customary bills for October 2024. The second is the personnel report.
Yes, you can see in your board packets lots of different personnel items related to leaves, hiring, resignations, et cetera.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions on the personnel report from the board?
No.
From the audience? All right. We have recognition of the sixth-day enrollment numbers.
Yeah, so every year, we automatically roll over all the students from the preceding school year into attendance for this current school year. And then, once we get to the sixth day, if, if a student was rolled over but they never showed up, uh, we assume at that point that they will not be registering, and we drop them from the rolls. So we kind of consider that sixth-day enrollment as the school year enrollment, even though we know it will change, of course. Uh, but right now, with the sixth day, it stands at eighteen hundred and fifty-four students. That's about fifty fewer than we had last year, than we finished with last year. Uh, but I will say it's comparable in terms of where we were fifty-two weeks ago at this time. So students will continue to enroll. We typically get more coming in than, than going out. So I'm expecting that that number will, um, get closer to nineteen hundred. I do want to point out, um, the last two classes that we have had, uh, our current kindergarten class and our first-grade class, uh, the two smallest in the district. So our kindergarten class this year is, um, one hundred and forty-seven. And last year, uh, we had about one fifty, and now that group, uh, is at one fifty-six as first graders. So, um, those are the two smallest classes that we've had. So, um, it's too early to say that this is a trend with regard to enrollment, but certainly, uh, two small classes. And then our biggest classes, our current seventh graders, uh, there's two hundred and sixty-two of them. So, um, overall enrollment, about eighteen fifty.
Great, thank you. Any questions on the sixth-day enrollment? No, from the audience? All right. We have approval of the administrator and teacher compensation report?
Yes, state law requires that every school district post on their website, uh, a compensation report. So it has salaries for every employee as well as benefits. And you can find those, uh, it's a bit of a, uh, a, a science how some districts post these. Um, they're posted, but you got to kind of look. Ours is pretty evident. If you go to the business office, it is easy to find. It's called compensation report. Some people call them by the, by the school law number. And, and that's a bit of a way, I think, for people to hide them. Uh, but we don't do that. It's, it's readily available, and once it's approved tonight, we'll get that on our website.
Any questions on that from the board?
No.
From the audience? We have approval of tuition and salary adjustments.
Yes, one of the things in our contract that we provide for is for staff members who take additional graduate-level courses to move over in terms of lanes. So, um, when you come right out of college, you have a bachelor's degree, and then once you take five classes, you get to the bachelor's fifteen column, which provides for additional compensation. We also reimburse those classes partially. So, uh, teachers right now can get a hundred and seventy-five dollars per credit hour reimbursed. And so it's a nice incentive. It's, it's really a win-win. The employee gets additional compensation. But from the district's perspective, we get people who are, who are more knowledgeable and better trained. So it, it really is beneficial to all of our students. And you can see, again, by looking at that report, a lot of staff members take advantage of that.
Any questions on that? From the audience? Okay, we have approval of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five discipline handbook.
Yes, under the parent tab on our website, there is a discipline handbook, which each year we need to renew and post. So, um, this is the version for this coming school year.
Any questions on the handbook? From the audience? We have approval of a new club at James Hart.
Yes, the last couple of years, it's been well-publicized. One of our James Hart P E teachers, Matt Samoti, uh, went out and partnered with a, a company out of California who provided us with thirty bikes for our kids. And, um, actually, we started, let me go backwards. We started, we first got bikes from, uh, Goodspeed for our kindergarten kids, uh, so that they can learn their glider bikes, so they can learn how to ride bikes. And, you know, Andy works at Willow and Ryan's there. It's fun to see those kids zipping around the, the gymnasium, learning how to ride a bike. Um, and then, more recently, James Hart teacher, Matt Samoti, was able to acquire thirty bikes, like mountain bikes, for the James Hart students. And now what Matt wants to do is start a new club, not only for riding purposes for kids, but also to maintain the bikes. So he wants to use the students who really have this interest to provide the maintenance to the bikes because that can get expensive. So, um, it's a great idea by Matt. He's a real go-getter, and, uh, and I think this will be a wonderful addition to our clubs.
Great. Any questions on the new club? From the audience? I, I do want to mention that, um, Mr. Sullivan was telling us about teaching the kids, the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, how to ride a bike. And he was explaining how there are kids who don't know how to ride a bike. And if you've ever taught a kid how to ride without training wheels, you know that it is back-breaking work. And I, he was explaining how he's, you know, got his hands on the handlebars and these bigger kids and trying to keep them up. And I, I'm going to have to come over and see this because, but he's getting those kids to read and to ride a bike. And I think it's just great that we're giving them the confidence to ride a bike. It's a great skill to have, so I'm really excited about that. Okay, we have approval of the consent agenda. Consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented in items seven A, seven B, seven C, seven D, seven E, seven F, and seven G.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Ms. Bethay?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Ms. Scully?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Ms. Marks?
Yes.
All right.
Motion carries. We have several action agenda, action agenda items tonight. We have the second payment of August 2024 bills and the first payment of September 2024 bills. Questions on the bills? Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Moved upon.
Go ahead, Ryan. Moved upon the recommendation of the chief school business official that the Board of Education authorized a second payment of August 2024 bills and the first payment of September 2024 bills in an amount not to exceed one million, nine hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Ms. Scully?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Ms. Bethay?
Yes.
Ms. Marks?
Yes.
All rights.
We have approval of policy five twenty E, resolution to prohibit sexual harassment.
Yes, this is recommended press policy language from the State Board of Education. Um, and they ask that all districts update their sexual policy, harassment policy. So this language is verbatim from the state.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
No.
From the audience? Is there a motion to approve?
Moved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the board approve the policy number five twenty dash E, resolution to prohibit sexual harassment.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Ms. Scully?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Ms. Bethay?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Marks?
Yes.
Motion carries. We have approval of agreement with Saint Andrews Church.
Yes, so, um, one of the things that all districts have to pro- plan for or prepare for is a possible evacuation of students to an off-campus site. And we work largely with the Park District and/or local churches to provide those locations. Uh, unfortunately, as we entered this school year, it was brought to our attention that Saint Andrews Church, which is the Churchill School evacuation site located at the corner of Idlewild and Regal Road, is going to be closing. And, um, as we thought about possible locations to evacuate those kids, there's really not a viable site outside of Saint Andrews unless we cross Halsted, which we do not want to do. And that's not near either. So, um, so we reached out to the church and just asked, "Is there any way that even though you're not open anymore, that we can still use your building if we needed to?" And they have been nothing but wonderful in working with us and not going to charge us. Uh, they just wanted a, a contract in place, which of course makes sense. And so we had our attorneys draft up a written agreement between us and the, and the church so that we're able to use the bu- building if necessary. So that's what you have.
Any questions? How will we have access?
They will provide keys to us.
Okay, great.
Yeah, once we get the agreement.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any questions from the audience? All right. Is there a motion to approve?
Moved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the agreement with Saint Andrews Church to use their facility in case of an evacuation from Churchill School.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Ms. Scully?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Ms. Bethay?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Ms. Marks?
Yes.
All rights.
Motion carries. We have approval of appointment of trustees of schools.
So the state, um, state legislature passed a new law providing for a change in the governance of our township treasurer. And the new model is going to resemble what we currently do with our special ed co-op. So each district in Speed District eight oh two has a, a governing board and an operating board. And the governing board, each school district, and there's roughly fifteen who comprise Speed membership, all of us have a board member who serves on their board. And Mr. Schmidt is our representative on the Speed Board. So the Thornton Township Treasurer's Office is now adopting that same model. And each district is going to nominate an individual to be on the board for the Treasurer's Office. And, um, so it could be one of you, it could be me, uh, but we think it would be outstanding if it was our chief school business official. So, um, so this is a nomination for, uh, Dr. Trimburger to be our representative on the Thornton Town, I say Thornton Township, Bloom Township Treasurer's Board. Yes, it's, it's Bloom, not Thornton, so I take that back. Bloom. But it is Dr. Trimburger will be on the board for us, so thank you for willingly agreeing to do that.
Any questions from the board?
No.
From the audience? Is there a motion to approve?
Moved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Dr. Eric. Trimburger is the district's representative to serve as trustee for the Bloom Township Trustees of Schools in accordance with House Bill three zero five.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Ms. Bethay?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Ms. Scully?
Yes.
Ms. Marks?
Yes.
All rights.
Motion carries. We need to approve to enlist a facilitator for district affinity groups.
So, um, you recall last year, um, Kimmy Ann Khrushenko was one of our staff members, and she was working for Teach Plus, which is an Illinois State Board of Education-approved provider of affinity group work. And the ultimate goal of affinity groups is, is to not only recruit but retain teachers of color into our profession, profession, and specifically to our district. And, um, Kimmy Ann came, I believe it was two board meetings ago, uh, and asked once again to be able to do this work with District one fifty-three. And even though she's no longer employed here, I have a lot of respect for Kimmy Ann, and I think she would be an outstanding facilitator. So, uh, what I'm asking for is your approval for us to enter into a contract with her. Now that she's not employed here, she would be an outside contractor. Um, and once we have that contract in place, but I just wanted to get your, uh, approval in the process.
Any questions from the board? From the audience? Is there a motion to approve?
Moved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the hiring of Kimion Krujink to facilitate the district's affinity group meetings for the 2024-25 school year, the amount not to exceed $750.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Ms. Bethay?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Ms. Scully?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Markes?
Yes.
All eyes.
Motion carries. We have mid-year teacher resignation.
Yes, unfortunately, on the third day of school, we had a staff member resign. And normally, if we have a resignation, the board frequently approves resignations under the personnel part of the agenda. However, because this violated the state law, which requires a 30-day notice before the start of a school year, so for us, school started on the 19th. Teachers need to give notice to us by July 19th in order to be released from their contract. This teacher resigned on the third day of school, and therefore, I'm asking for you to formally decline the resignation. And what this means is that that teacher is not able to seek employment in another school district, and if they do, we are able to pursue suspension of their license. It's not something that makes me feel good. I don't like doing that, but also, the dynamics of hiring have changed. And with the shortages that we have, we need more time than, I don't know, negative three days to find a staff member for the start of the school year. So we're asking for you to formally vote and say, we do not accept this resignation.
Any questions from the board?
No.
From the audience? Is there a motion?
Moved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education reject the resignation of Elena Larson, fourth grade teacher at Churchill School, as per Section 2414 of the school code, which prohibits a teacher from resigning during a school term in the event that the teacher accepts another teaching position elsewhere.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Ms. Bethay?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Ms. Scully?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Ms. Markes?
Yes.
Motion carries. We have adoption of the fiscal year 25 budget.
Yes, Dr. Trinberger spoke earlier during the public hearing about our budget. I'll just point out one thing. The community overwhelmingly supported our referendum. That's how I got to know Christine. She was a member of that. Several of you in the audience were members of that committee that helped us get that referendum through. And from the beginning, we stated that our goals for the referendum, if it was successful, were to eliminate our deficit, to address our facilities, and to build up our cash reserves. And what you heard when Dr. Trinberger presented the budget earlier, we have been able to take a deficit that was in excess of $2 million, and now it is at $150,000. And the only reason it's that is because we have put a new roof on Churchill, and we're putting a new roof on Willow next year. And so those two things in and of themselves address our second goal, was to upgrade our facilities. And of course, we're still going to try to squirrel money away for our savings, but just know, I want the community to know that those dollars are really, really valuable. And if you work at Churchill, if you're Ms. Peacock, or any of the staff members who work there, and you don't have a bucket in your classroom now, and last spring you did, that's because there's a brand-new roof there. So thank you again to the community for the support.
Any questions on the budget?
No.
From the audience? Is there a motion to approve?
Moved upon the recommendation of the Finance and Property Committee and the chief school business official that the Board of Education approve the budget for the 2024-2025 school year as presented, and adopt the resolution declaring the budget for the 2024-2025 fiscal year as attached.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Ms. Scully?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Ms. Bethay?
Yes.
Ms. Markes?
Yes.